Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order, and we'll start by our invocation and our pledge of allegiance.
Let's bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and the many blessings we have received. We thank you for the ability to create a strong and healthy community, and we thank you, Lord, for each and every individual that make our community a great community to live. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance is to God, in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, Mayor, Council. I'd like to introduce to you Ms. RGV Sweetheart 2017. She's Ms. Emma Isabella Garcia. Emma participates in modeling, public speaking, and stage performance. She was named 2017 Top Model, 2017 Best Personality, and 2017 Miss Congeniality. We have Emma here who would like to say a few words.
Here you go, Ms. Emma.
Want to stand over here so I can hear you? Hi, my name is Emma Isabella Garcia. I'm four years old and I go to Gothic Christian School, and I'm Ms. RGV Sweetheart 2017.
Congratulations.
She wanted Eminem's.
She can be on the... Yeah, he'll still get her. Come here, Mama. Over here next to the mayor.
Can we get her on top of the chair?
Can you get him?
You want to do that? We could do that.
Okay.
Stand up.
Do you want to stand up? All right. There you go.
There we go.
We're going to help you.
Maybe just put you a little bit more towards us in the middle of the mayor.
We're there. Okay, now pose. You won't fall.
Three, two, one, smile. One, two, three. Thank you.
Next item. Ms. Carrion?
Yes, Mayor, Council. We have Mr. Gustavo Salinas here with us from the Texas Health and Human Services, who will be accepting the proclamation. The only thing is that there was a typo, so they went to go redo it right now, but the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas people who are elderly or have disabilities have contributed to the general welfare of the City of Mission by helping to preserve customs, convictions, and traditions of many people from diverse backgrounds. Whereas these residents are vital and integral members of our society, and their wisdom and experience have enriched our lives. Whereas abuse of the elderly and people with disabilities in domestic and institutional settings is a widespread problem affecting hundreds of thousands of people across the country. Whereas in 2016, there were 83,534 completed cases of elderly and disabled persons abuse in Texas, of which 51,608 were confirmed. Whereas elder abuse is grossly under-reported because the elderly who are being abused find it very difficult to tell anyone and are usually ashamed and sometimes afraid. Whereas elder abuse happens to men and women of all income levels, all cultural and ethnic groups, whether they are in good health or incapacitated in some way, in poor neighborhoods and in suburbia. Whereas many of these cases investigated by Adult Protective Services in Texas involve self-neglect, and it is our duty as citizens to reach out to people in need. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2017 to be Elder Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Mission, and urge all citizens to work together to help reduce abusive neglect of people who are elderly or have disabilities, proclaimed on this 22nd day of May 2017.
Do we need a motion to approve the proclamation?
Mayor, I move that we proclaim Elderly Abuse Prevention Month as presented here.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
They're working on the proclamation.
Thank you very much. My name's Gustavo Salinas, and I have Maribel, one of my coworkers, with me. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for the opportunity to help us do some outreach with the abuse, neglect, and exploitation. So if anyone out there is suffering from abuse, you know a friend, a neighbor, grandparent, or tia, or tio, please give us a call at 1-800-252-5400. It is a free and confidential call, that way we can have the opportunity to go and see how we can help remedy that. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you. We want to take the opportunity to thank you for working closely with our Mission Police Department, so we appreciate that relationship. Do you all mind taking a quick picture with the mayor and the council, please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you need to...
Just to center ourselves, or just to take center?
Right.
Three, two, one.
We'll just need to send that through.
Just to center ourselves, or just to take center? Right. Three, two, one.
Thank you.
We now have our Chamber of Commerce Director, Mr. Rossell.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Just a report from the Mission Chamber of Commerce. On Thursday, May 11th, at 5:30, we had a farmer's insurance, Mr. Portofino Hernandez, ribbon-cutting off of Expressway 83 in McAllen, Texas. Very successful ribbon-cutting. We had about 50 people in attendance. On Friday, May 12th, we held our third annual All For The Kids Golf Tournament at Cimarron Country Club. We had 25 teams participate, but we had about 31 teams in total that actually, you know, helped out with this great cause. The funds raised will be used to purchase over 2,000 brand-new backpacks, which will be distributed to children who attend the MCISD at the Back-to-School Bash in August. We really want to thank everyone who participated, and especially to our sponsors. Next, we had the... On Tuesday, May 16th, at 10:30 a.m., we had the Sure Stay Hotel ribbon-cutting off of Expressway 83 in Mission, Texas. I believe the city manager and the mayor were in attendance. Formerly Las Palmas Inn has been a member of the Mission Chamber since 1999. We are very honored to celebrate this ribbon-cutting with them. Last Thursday, on May 18th, we had Virtuoso Productions Ribbon Cutting, which is one of our newest members. We celebrated with them at Europa Cuisine and Entertainment, and we had about 25 people in attendance. As far as upcoming events, we are getting ready to prepare for our community barbecue throwdown, which is currently tentatively scheduled for July 22nd. And as, you know, that comes up in the coming weeks and months, I will definitely provide more details with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the department reports. They're in the packet. Any questions you all might have, well, don't hesitate to ask.
Mayor, there's no question I'd like to put into a formal motion to accept a department report as presented here in writing.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve the reports? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Item seven, since participation. Do we have anybody from the audience that would like to address the council? Anybody from the audience that might want to address the council? If not, we'll go on to our public hearings, and we'll go ahead and ask Mr. Acevedo to start with 1.18.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Item 1.18 is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for a single-family dwelling within property-zoned R4 Mobile Home and Modular District. The address is 2116 Pleasant Lane, being a tract of land out of the north, 206.28 feet of Lot 31 Sherland Orchard Subdivision, also known as Lot 5 King Mobile Home Subdivision. The current zoning is R4, and the applicant is Berta and Graviel Montiel. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On May 10, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located within King's Mobile Subdivision along the south side of Pleasant Lane. Mayor, in the property zone R4, a CUP can be approved to build a site-built home if the lot meets the R1 requirements. The lot in question measures 60 feet by a depth of 103 feet, meeting the R1 size requirement. There was no public opposition during the PNC meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, subject to transferability to others. The Planning and Zoning Commission and our city manager are also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. These items now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? If not, we ask that we go ahead and accept the recommendation from our planning and zoning and our staff.
I so moved, Mayor.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the conditional use permit, and also approve ordinance 4516? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item B?
Item 1.1B is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for a home occupation for notary services and preparation of income tax form at 2606 North Sheri Road, being of 5.02 acre tract of land out of the north, 190 feet of the south, 290 feet of the west, 1150 feet out of Lot 265 John H. Sheri Subdivision. The property is owned AOI, and the applicant is Wada Lupe Ramon. This would require the adoption of an ordinance if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit. On May 10, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located a quarter-mile north of Griffin Parkway along the east side of Sheri Road. Ms. Ramon has a CUP permitting a home occupation for a notary service and income tax preparation from her home. Ms. Ramon was previously approved in 2014 for a period of three years. She is the only employee in the home occupation and has limited hours by appointment only. There was no public opposition during the PNC meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval for life for use. Staff is recommending approval for three years to continue to monitor this occupation. Our city manager is also recommending approval for three years. However, our Planning and Zoning Commission did approve this item for life for use. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Are you approving... giving him a two-year provision?
We're recommending a three-year period, Mayor, just to continue to assess this operation.
What happened with one year?
Well, this has already been in operation for some time now, and that's why we don't agree with life for use. I mean, if they want to continue, our feeling is that eventually they move out and go to a building, but the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend that they be granted life for use.
Well, I think we have a precedence now that you can give anybody a life of use. We did it here the other day.
We did it for drive-through window. This is a home occupation, but yes.
What's the difference?
Well, the business that was granted a life of use is a C3 business. This is a home occupation. They're operating from a residential home, and I think the intent is to eventually move out from the residential setting into a commercial setting, and that is the reason why I was recommending for three years.
Well, planning and zoning is recommending life of use?
Yes, that's correct.
How about you guys? You're pro-life of use? Three guys? So why don't you all make a motion to do a life of use? The recommendation is coming from the planning and zoning. We'll as well give everybody life of use from now on. We lost the presidency the other day. They recommended life of use, and you are recommending a three-year?
Correct.
But normal is a one-year, correct?
Well, no, no. This has been in operation for some time now. Normal is for one year, and then we give three-year approvals, and after a while, it is the option whether to give another three-year extension or recommend for life for use, depending on the CUP.
And how long has she been in business?
She's been in operation since 2006.
And you say her intent is to go into a commercial area, so since 2006?
That's the way that we see it as a planning department. We see it as kind of like an incubator to them, so that they can get started on their feet and eventually move out into a commercial building.
Mayor, if I'm in order, I would like to put into a formal motion to accept Mr. Acevedo's recommendation for a three-year.
And you wouldn't want to accept the planning and zoning?
Being that it is a residential area, you know, I would concur with Mr. Acevedo's recommendation.
Bendere's what? What is it?
Residential.
Residential?
Yep.
Okay, so the recommendation from Gustavo is?
Three years.
Three years.
Three years.
Two or three years?
Three years.
Three years.
Point of order, Mayor?
Planning and zoning is recommending a life of use.
Mayor, I would like to ask a point of order from the... from our lawyer, if you don't mind, Mayor.
Well, our lawyer is not voting on this one.
No, but I'd just like to ask him a question, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
For the motion to pass for three years, all four of us have to vote in favor of it, right?
No, this would not be considered a denial of the planning and zoning recommendation. The recommendation was life of use, but it will not require forfeits vote, because you're not denying their request. You're just changing the terms of the acceptance.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Flores.
Well, I want to make a motion that we go ahead and accept the recommendation from our planning and zoning to give them life of use. It's a residential. They're not going to bother anybody. It's not a business.
It's on Sheri Road, right?
So life of use would be right... you know, the precedents we had before, we'll do it today again.
Mr. Mayor, and the only... and I apologize for interrupting, Mayor, but there is a motion by Dr. Okanya and a second by...
There was not a motion. He was recommending.
Oh, okay.
He didn't make a motion.
Dr. Okanya?
I did put it into a formal motion, Mayor, but if you're interested in giving the lifetime for those workers, I will withdraw my motion.
Well, I didn't see it as a motion, so... Well, my motion's on the table.
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Plata. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion carries.
That would be ordinance 4517.
4517. Item C?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1C is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and outside consumption of alcoholic beverages for the lounge and pro shop at Meadow Creek. The address is 1300 Circle Drive, being a 5.17 acres out of Block C1 Meadow Creek Country Club, Phase 1A subdivision. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On May 10, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located 500 feet east of Inspiration Road, just off of JC Parkway and Circle Drive. This CUP is for the sale of alcohol both at the Meadow Creek Pro Shop and the Lounge. This CUP was last approved on April 25, 2017, for a period of one year. The pro shop is open from 6:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and the lounge is open from 3:00 p.m. to midnight. There was no public opposition during the PNC meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the CUP, to be valid for a period of now until April 24, 2018, at which time the applicant will have to renew their TABC license and conditional use permit. The planning commission and our city manager are also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. These items now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request?
Any?
You're in favor?
Yes.
Well, that's okay. You don't have to... Anybody else? Okay, so...
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance 4518.
Second.
And approve the conditional use permit. We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item D?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 1.1D is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the Bryan Event Center and Bed and Breakfast at 1113 East Mile 2 Road, being a 1.01 acre tract of land out of Lot 29-10 West Edition to Sherland Subdivision. The property is owned AOI, and the applicant is Ariel King. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, the adoption of an ordinance is required. On May 10, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The site is located at the northwest corner of Bryan Road and 2-Mile Road. Mrs. King has been in operation for more than one year with no issues, and requires that the conditional use permit be approved once again to continue with her operation. Mrs. King hosts smaller-scale events at this location. There was no public opposition during the PNC meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval for three years. Staff is recommending approval for three years to continue to assess this operation. Our planning commission and city manager are also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. These items now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? If not...
Would like to approve.
Will go ahead and accept the recommendation?
Second, Mayor.
From our planning and zoning, and also adopt ordinance 4519. We do have an early motion and an early second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. You all need to wait for me a little bit, man. Aye to me?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 1.1E is a public hearing for the discussion and action to amend the Mission Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, zoning, Article X, Section 1.54, by adding subsections 5, the revocation by the city manager or designee. If the council is inclined to approve this request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On May 10, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider amending the Mission Code of Ordinances to add subsections 5, which states that the city manager may, at the time of issuance of a conditional use permit... or that the city council may, at the time of issuance of a conditional use permit, delegate the city manager or designee the authority to revoke a CUP permit for non-compliance. The city manager or designee may not revoke any permit prior to the expiration of the time period given to the permit holder for which to comply. A revocation pursuant to this section does not prohibit a permit holder from reapplying for a subsequent conditional use permit. There was no opposition during the PNC meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager and planning commission. This is a public hearing. These items now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? If not, the recommendation from our staff, and then our ordinance would be 4520.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve... to approve the recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 4.0 is the disposition of minutes that we had on the city council meeting on May 8 of 2017. We do need a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve. Second, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. We also have to acknowledge the receipt of those minutes that we had from all our volunteers and our Boys and Girls Club meeting that they had on April 11 of 2017, the Citizens Advisory Committee on April 11 of 2017, Parks and Recreation Department March 17 of 2017, Planning and Zoning Commission on April 36 of 2017, Mission Historical Museum April 17 of 2017, and Spear Memorial Library on April 18 of 2017. We do need a motion to acknowledge the minutes that those board members had.
I'm going to approve the acknowledged receipt of minutes.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve those acknowledgements of those minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Against, motion carries. Now we go on to our approval and authorizations to go into our first item, 4.1. Mr. Acevedo?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 4.1 is a homestead exemption variance for 4.026 acre tract of land out of Lot 31-2 West Edition and Sherland Subdivision. The property is owned AOI, and the applicant is Ernesto Estrada. On May 10, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this homestead exemption variance request. The property is located half a mile north of 2-Mile Road along the west side of Los Cebanos. On November 10, 2014, the city council passed the homestead exemption ordinance, which allows for homesteads to be granted various waivers to the city subdivision requirements if and only if the lot is being proposed for the applicant's single-family home. In this case, Mr. Estrada and his wife are planning to build their home on this site. With regards to water, the applicant is proposing to connect to an existing 4-inch water line located along the west side of Los Cebanos Road. With regards to sewer, the applicant is proposing to connect to an existing 15-inch sanitary sewer line along the east side of Los Cebanos Road. The capital sewer recovery fees are also waived via the homestead exemption variance. With regards to street and storm drainage, the subject site has frontage to Los Cebanos Road, which has a future 80-foot right-of-way with a 57-foot paved street. An additional 20 feet of right-of-way will be needed, will be dedicated by the applicant, and drainage will be on-site. Other requirements, the applicant must comply with the model subdivision rules, must dedicate water rights, and the streetlight requirement is also waived. Park fees are also waived via the homestead exemption variance. The board unanimously recommended approval. The staff is recommending approval, subject to compliance with the homestead exemption variance provision, which include the signing of an affidavit and the dedication of the 20 feet of additional right-of-way along Los Cebanos. way along Los Cebanos Road. The Planning Commission and our city manager are also recommending approval. This item's now before you.
Okay. Now, it's just lower and just tell me what we're gonna do here. I mean, you read a whole paragraph. We didn't understand one bit. Just tell me what they're asking. An exemption on what?
On the subdivision process.
They don't want us to, um.
They don't want us, there's a, the homestead exemption allows for families to build a single family home without having to subdivide, without having to go through the process of hiring an engineer and subdividing.
Well, but, but we do have, we, we do have to do it anyway. Anybody has to do a subdivision to, to build the house.
Well, the homestead exemption variance waives that requirement. It was passed in two thousand fourteen by the council.
This is the same thing we did for the firemen on Taylor Road?
That's correct, sir. It's the same exception. Uh, we, we adopted this approximately two years ago. It's to assist families who are building within that lot their homestead. It's gotta be their homestead. Now, if they wanna continue building upon that lot, like a second home or a third home for a different, uh, for another family member, then they need an engineer, follow the process where the park fees and everything comes into place.
Well, the recommendation would be to go ahead and give them the, uh, the, um, exemption.
That's correct.
Homestead exemption.
Need a motion to go ahead and approve the exemption.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the, uh, homestead exemption variance of the four point zero two six acres. All those, uh, in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Four point two.
Thank you, Mayor. Item four point two is a preliminary, uh, plat approval of Tacon Subdivision, which is a private subdivision, being a six point six six gross acre tract of land, more or less, being a part or portion of lot sixteen dash two West Edition and Sherland subdivision. The property is owned R one T. It is owned for townhomes, and the developer's Tacon Group LLC. The engineer is Mario Salinas of Mas Engineering. On May ten, two thousand seventeen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider the preliminary and final plat approval of Tacon Subdivision. The proposed subdivision is located on the south side of One Mile South Road between Los Cebanos and Scenic Way. The developers proposing sixty-nine townhome residential lots and one common area for a swimming pool and recreational amenities. There is a variance, um, to allow the subdivision to be private and gated. Staff does not object to the variance. With regards to water, the developer is proposing to relocate it, to relocate a twelve inch water line along One Mile South to provide water services to each lot. Fire hydrants will be installed as per the fire marshal's direction. With regards to sewer, the developers proposing to connect into a twelve inch, uh, sewer line located along the east side of Los Cebanos Road. There will be, uh, a two hundred dollar sewer capital recovery fee imposed per lot, which equates to thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars. With regards to streets and storm drainage, the subdivision has access to One Mile South, a future hundred foot right of way with a proposed street of sixty-two feet, uh, back to back. The developer will be dedicating an additional twenty feet along One Mile South to equate to the minimum requirement. The section of One Mile South will be paved by the developer during the subdivision process. The developer will also be dedicating additional sixty feet of right of way for the future expansion of Los Cebanos Road. The subdivision consists of a single private street, which will, uh, have a fifty feet of right of way with a thirty-two foot paved street. Storm drainage is accomplished through twenty-four inch storm lines, which will connect into an existing storm drain system currently located on One Mile South. Other requirements include park fees in the amount of three hundred dollars per lot, which equates to twenty thousand seven hundred dollars, uh, the installation of sidewalks along One Mile South Road, and the water district exclusion, and that they must, uh, comply and submit a streetlight plan for review. However, those streetlights will be paid by the homeowners association, and that they comply with all other format findings. The board unanimously recommended approval. The staff is recommending approval, subject to no objection to the private street variance, subject to meeting the private street policy, payment of the park and capital sewer recovery fees, the installation of the five foot sidewalk and street widening, street widening along One Mile South Road, that they provide water district exclusions, and that they meet the model subdivision rules. Our city manager, fire chief, public works director, and city engineer are also recommending approval. This item's now before you.
Okay, this is a subdivision?
Yes, sir.
How many lots?
Sixty-nine lots.
Sixty-nine lots?
It's within Seven Oaks. It's just south of Leal Elementary School.
Where, whereabouts?
Uh, it's on South Mile Road, just right in front of, uh, Leal Elementary. This is a recent rezoning that we did not too long ago, from an AOI to R one T, which is what's being proposed, sixty-nine.
Was this in, is this where they were gonna build the apartments, or?
They wanted to build apartments, but at the end of the day, we, uh, they got only the approval for townhomes, so they're gonna build sixty-nine town, townhomes.
We approve that?
We approve the rezoning to R one T.
As opposed to the a hundred and plus apartments that we're gonna?
Yeah, I think it was a hundred and twenty or a hundred and forty apartments, so they scaled it down to sixty-nine.
There was no opposition?
There was no opposition, no.
You're gonna have sixty-nine townhomes?
Correct.
Um, both on one side, uh?
There's about thirty-four on one side and thirty-five on the other side. There's a street running down the middle.
Okay. We need a motion to go ahead and approve the recommendation of approving sixty-nine lots on Mile One.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Yeah, motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item four point three.
Thank you, Mayor. Item four point three is a final plat approval for Mar subdivision, also a private subdivision, being a twelve point eleven acre tract of land out of lot three hundred and four Johnny Cherry subdivision. The property is owned R one T for townhomes, and the developers, Mar Designs and Construction Incorporated. The engineer for this, uh, particular plat is also Mario Salinas Engineering. On February eighth, two thousand seventeen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider the preliminary and final plat approval of Mar subdivision. The proposed subdivision is approximately half a mile north of Two Mile, uh, Road along the west side of Sheri Road. Uh, the applicant, um, Mar Designs is proposing to construct eighty-eight townhomes, and, uh, all of them are meeting or exceeding the minimum R one T area requirements. There is also a variance to allow the subdivision to be private and gated, which staff does not object to. With regards to water, the developers proposing to loop an eight inch water system to an existing ten inch line located along the west side of Sheri Road to provide services to each lot. Fire hydrants will be installed as per the fire marshal's direction. With regards to sewer, the developer is proposing to connect to an eight inch sewer line located along the east side of Sheri Road. There will be a two hundred dollar per lot sewer capital recovery fee imposed, which equates to seven, seventeen thousand six hundred dollars. With regards to streets and storm drainage, the subdivision has furnished to Sheri Road, which is a future hundred and twenty foot right of way, eighty-one foot, uh, paved street. There is an additional twenty feet of right of way proposed that will comply with the NPOs, through a fair plan for this, uh, for Sheri Road. There is no widening of Sheri Road in the near future. It proposed at this location. The internal lots will also have, uh, furnished to a fifty foot, foot, uh, right of way with the street that will be paved at thirty-two feet. And will be private and built to the city's construction specifications. Drainage for the subdivision is proposed through the use of twenty-four inch lines located within the proposed street that will flow into a detention pond located on the westernmost area of the subdivision. There is also an eight inch bleeder line connected to the Tex- dot storm drain inlet located along the west side of Sheri Road. It is noted that all fees, uh, he, uh, have been paid. The sewer capital recovery fees and park fees have been paid to the city. The city has inspected the property and it has passed, uh, the public works inspection. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, uh, subject to no objection to the private street variance, subject to meeting the private street policy, um, meeting the model subdivision rules and complying with the street alignment policy. Our city manager, fire chief, public works director, and city engineer are also recommending approval. This item's now before you.
How many lots are these?
Eighty-eight lots, Mayor.
You know, I, I would approve, I mean, I would appreciate it in, on, on the future maps like this, you would put your amount of lots on the property description.
Okay.
On the subdivision.
We'll do that.
We'll take care of that, sir.
Nineteen, eighty-eight lots.
We'll do that.
Recommendation for the planning and zoning, we need a motion to approve the final plat. This is the final plat.
Second, Mayor.
We do have a motion and a second to approve the final plat. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item four point four.
Good afternoon, uh, Mayor, City Council members. Item four point four, uh, is the authorization to purchase equipment via state approved contract for the Public Works Department. Staff seeking authorization to, uh, purchase via state approved, approval of comparative contracts for capital outlet equipment for streets and drainage departments. Itemized equipment list is attached with the actual cost and the respective contract number. We're looking into purchasing, uh, Mayor John Deere tractor for the drainage department and a Tac oil sprayer for the streets department. Uh, the Tac oil sprayer trailer will cost twenty-four thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars, and, uh, John Deere, uh, fifty-one hundred E tractor will cost, uh, fifty-two thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars with fifty-seven, uh, cents. Against, staff recommendation is the authorization to purchase via state approved contracts, TASV, uh, four, uh, forty-seven dash fourteen for the tractor, and a buy board or co-op contract, uh, number, uh, five fifteen dash sixteen for the Tac oil sprayer trader, Mayor.
We do need a motion to approve the authorization to the purchase of equipment via state, state approved.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Four point five. Is nobody?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item four point five is authorization to solicit bids for Housing Assistance Program Phase sixteen dash two. The Citizens Advisory Committee met on May ninth, two thousand seventeen, and approved staff's recommendation to provide reconstruction assistance for four homes and rehabilitation assistance for one home through the City BG program to the following addresses. Three oh five St. Marie, two bedroom, two bath, nine hundred and seventy square feet. Two oh six Leal, two bedroom, two bath, nine hundred and seventy square feet. Eleven eleven Los Cebanos Avenue, three bedroom, two bath, eleven sixty square feet. Ten zero three Horner Road, three bedroom, two bath, eleven sixty square feet, and rehabilitation at one sixteen East Turista. Staff's recommendation is to solicit bids for Housing Assistance Program Phase sixteen two. Location maps are, uh, attached for your.
How many homes?
There's five. There's four reconstructions and one rehab.
We need a motion to go ahead and solicit for bids.
Second, Mayor.
Do have a motion and second to solicit bids. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
You know, it would also be very nice if you would also put, how many houses you're going to bid for. It would also be nice for Roberto to also put there how much he's spending. Okay. Six, four point six.
Mayor and Council, item four point six is to approve a change order to Tabiza Holdings for the temporary home. We're currently building a temporary home, sir, and the change order here is so that we can install ceramic flooring instead of the tile flooring, the vinyl tile flooring, and the change order cost is an additional four hundred and fifty dollars. It's less than twenty-five percent of the cap that is allowed by the Texas Local Government Code. We're requesting authorization for this change order for the temporary home.
How much is the change order?
Four hundred and fifty dollars, sir.
Four hundred and fifty dollars.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the change order of four hundred and fifty dollars. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. It would be nice, next time, put the four hundred and fifty dollars change order.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We'll take care of all those changes, Mayor.
Okay.
On the actual, uh, gen item, the.
Yeah, whatever you're gonna spend or whatever you're doing, dealing with, it'd be better for us to go ahead and look at them here. Four point seven.
Mayor of City Council, the City Mission Police Department received a request for approval and ordinance providing for a no U-turn zone on the east and west side of the twenty-seven hundred block of North Holland Avenue. We had a number of complaints, sir, from residents on the neighborhood just in front of the ID Academy on North Holland Avenue. Uh, we went out there and witnessed it ourselves. It went before Traffic Safety Committee, and they're also recommending that we put no U-turn signs in front of the school. The, uh, item is before you.
What's ordinance number?
That's it. Forty-five twenty-one.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the ordinance forty-five twenty-one. And, do the motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Four point eight.
Mayor of City Council, the Mission Police Department is requesting authorization to declare seventy-three weapons as surplus for the purpose of trading them for new weapons through an ATF level three gun dealer. For a number of years dating back to the nineteen eighties, we've acquired a number of, uh, shotguns, rifles, and, uh, some pistols that we would like to trade off for new weapons. In order to do that, uh, we have to declare a surplus, and that's what we're requesting today, and everything will go through an ATF, uh, level three dealer to make sure it's done properly.
We need a motion to go ahead and authorize to declare seventy-three weapons surplus and allow them to, to trade them for new ones.
Yes, Mayor.
Okay.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Forty-nine.
Next item, Mayor of City Council, City Mission Police Department is requesting authorization to purchase a total of three new police vehicles. A twenty seventeen Chevrolet, uh, fifteen passenger van, uh, to be utilized as a prisoner transport van, a twenty seventeen Ford F-two-fifty truck to be utilized to pull our Skywatch watches that we have, and a twenty eighteen Chevrolet Impala that will be assigned to our Criminal Investigation Division. The total purchase is eighty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Eighty-four thousand nine hundred and three will come out of the City and Mission Asset Replacement Account. The remaining amount of four thousand three fifty-five will be paid through the Drug Forfeiture Account. Again, we're requesting authorization to purchase these three vehicles.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the authorization to purchase three police cars and all necessary equipment to equip the three cars.
So move, Mayor.
And a state approved contract, buy board contract, five twenty-one, the sixteen. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Four times, Delmiis.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mission Police Department is, is requesting authorization to purchase security camera equipment for the main police station to include a server, a camera system monitors, a camera and related mounting equipment and software. The total purchase is fifteen thousand twenty dollars and one cent. Uh, we're going to purchase this with our federal drug forfeiture, forfeiture account funds. Again, we're requesting to purchase this security camera equipment.
We did, need a motion to authorize the purchase, security system, computers, uh, equipment for the main police station to include a severe camera system monitor and a camera and a related monitoring equipment and software for a sole source vendor.
Yes, Mayor.
Second.
Do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terrasso. Forty-eleven.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I'd like to come before you to present item four point eleven. Approval of change order number two for additional sidewalk and culture ramps to be constructed along both sides of Inspiration Project. Staff is seeking authorization for change order number two to introduce additional parting of sidewalk and, and culture ramps in order to construct and have these facilities on both sides of Inspiration Road Project. in order to construct and have these facilities on both sides of Inspiration Road project. The additional sidewalk quantities will allow pedestrians on adjacent property to use either side of, to reach their destination. Staff is also seeking authorization to introduce additional items and quantities, striping, metal bean guard fence, detour, drainage items that are needed to construct a safer and proper roadway. Also, an additional forty working days are being requested to be added to the contract time to be able to construct the additional work. The total amount of the change order is three hundred and thirteen thousand four hundred and thirty-four dollars with forty-one cents, which is 4.47% of our original contract amount, which the city will only pay seven thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars with forty-three cents, equals a 2.4% share as per the AFA we text that. Change order is less than 25% cap allowed by the Texas Local Government Code. Staff recommendation, approval of change order number two.
Okay. You want us to go ahead and approve a change order?
That is correct, sir.
For how much?
For three hundred and thirteen thousand four hundred and thirty-four dollars with forty-one cents, which the city only pays seven thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars as per the AFA we have with text that.
Three hundred and fifteen thousand.
Three hundred and thirteen thousand four hundred and thirty-four dollars with forty-one cents, which we only pay 2.4% of that, which is seven thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Change order number two is for three hundred and thirteen thousand for additional sidewalks. How much of the sidewalks are gonna cost you?
We're building approximately 2.5 miles of new sidewalk. We have an item on this project, but we don't have enough quantity to put on both sides of the project, so we're extending the quantity and we're paying roughly, I mean, out of the three thirteen, there's some items included in this same change order, like I mentioned, some drainage items and striping and metal bean guard fence. So approximately on sidewalk is about two hundred and fifteen thousand just of concrete sidewalk, which we only pay 2.4% out of that.
On the sidewalks, you already have a bid?
That's correct, sir. We already have an item. We need to extend the item now. We don't have enough quantity to build on both sides of the project.
How much was the bid for the sidewalks?
The bid was twenty-five dollars per square yard. We're increasing it to, I believe it's twenty-nine dollars per square yard.
But you're increasing the linear feet also?
Yes, sir, by two and a half miles.
Two and a half miles.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
So how? Additional sidewalk and wheelchair ramps to be constructed along both sides of Inspiration. You're going out on bids or you already going out on bids?
No, we already have a contractor to do this work, which is Texas Cordia, which is working out there right now to line Inspiration Road from the expressway on the way to Mall Three.
So you don't have a bid yet?
I already have a bid item, sir. Yes, sir. It's part of the contract. I just need your permission to extend the quantity.
And use the same contractor, Mayor.
And use the same contractor, yes, sir.
If I may, sir, we already have a contractor. The contractor in place is IOC, I'm sorry, Texas Cordia.
Yes, sir.
Texas Cordia, what we're doing as a City of Mission, since there was extra funds on Inspiration Road, there's enough funds to be able to extend the sidewalks now to the other side of the road, which is about 2.4 miles. In order for us to do that extension, it's costing us a total of three hundred and thirteen thousand four hundred and thirty, three hundred and thirteen four hundred and thirty-four point forty-one. However, just of sidewalks, what the city engineer is saying that is we're spending about 250,000 just in sidewalks. The other 100,000 is actually for guard rail, detours, drainage items, and so forth. So in reality, it's only costing the City of Mission seven thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars with forty-three cents, which is just 2.4% of the AFA agreement that we have with text on.
Yeah, I know that, but none of that is explained here. You see how confusing it is? It says, let me tell you, it says, chief, it says, "Approval of change order number two, period." It always say for additional sidewalks and wheelchair ramps to be constructed along both sides of Inspiration Road. That has, doesn't, you know what I mean?
Yes, sir. It's not including what his presentation talks about, which is the...
No, I mean, you read a paragraph that nobody understood, and then, well, it could have been so easy to just to say what Martin said. So you only to get, you know, now on I want everything in the agenda that is, that is correct. I mean, let me tell you one thing. Let me give you another example, and I'm sorry I'm taking you guys all... Authorized to purchase computer systems, I mean, security computers, equipment for the main police station, to include a severe camera. And we never see the numbers, how much, how much those cameras are gonna cost. And, you know, I'm not gonna take that anymore. I wanna know how much you're paying for the cameras. I wanna know how much you're paying for, for, for the camera that's, that is only sole-source, that you can only buy it from one company. I wanna know how much you're paying for that. You know, there's a lot of little things here that, it's like, one, one item here that was correct, authorized to declare seventy-three weapons as surplus for the purchase, for the purpose of trading them for new weapons through a Level of Three guns dealers. See, that's very, you know, everybody should be like that.
If I'm not mistaken, sir, I believe you're reading the title only.
Huh?
If I'm not mistaken, I believe you're reading the title only. On the summary, we explain all the dollars and the paragraph of what Mr. Garza just explained. So everything is detailed on the, on the actual...
We'll go ahead and, what the mayor's requesting is for it to added in the actual agenda item itself, and we'll do that. We'll get together with staff.
We also have page two oh five and the packet where it says a quote also, for the cameras.
That's where they read from, right?
Yes.
Backup that the chief has presented.
There's nothing wrong with having a good agenda, a good, a good explanation to us.
Yes, sir.
How much is that sole-source vendor and who he is? Who is the sole-source vendor? We don't know. You're putting, somebody. It's like saying, I wanna compare to somebody. We don't know who they are.
Maybe just give us a hard copy.
Eh?
Give us a hard copy of the package, I guess.
Is that?
Well, I'll get together with staff and we'll, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Or go back to the binder system. It's right here.
We already approved your item?
Not yet, sir, no.
Okay. We need a motion to approve a change order.
I want to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. We only approve the change order. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Also have...
You have another one over here.
Yes, sir.
Also have item four point twelve, approval of work authorization number twenty-seven with LNG engineering related to the Taylor Road Phase Three project. Work authorization number twenty-seven entails professional services for Taylor Road Phase Three project. These services for right-of-way acquisition for Taylor Road from US eighty-three expressway north to Mall Two North. This project is a joint effort between the City of Mission, City of McAllen, and the County of Hidalgo, which an international agreement has been approved by all three government entities. This local, this work authorization number twenty-seven is for two million three hundred and eighty-seven thousand six hundred dollars. Staff recommendation, approval of work authorization number twenty-seven.
Okay. So you're saying that we are approving the work authorization number twenty-seven with LNG engineering related to the Taylor Road project?
Correct, yes, sir.
Between the City of McAllen and Hidalgo County and the City of Mission, right?
That is correct, sir. Yes, sir.
And it's going to be for two point seven?
Two million three hundred and eighty-seven thousand with six hundred dollars.
And you have budget two point seven?
That's a budget that we're gonna be working with?
Uh...
Or we are proving that...
We have a budget of four point four.
I mean...
For right-of-way acquisition. The total estimated project, then, it's roughly about 25 million dollars, including construction, right-of-way acquisition, PSNE, environmental...
But the 22.3 billion is for, for that project, period. It's not for LNG.
No, that's just for right-of-way acquisition, to acquire all the parcels that we have.
See, the way it sounds here is like we're gonna give, we're giving LNG 2.3 million dollars related to the project. It says, "Approval of work authorization number twenty-seven with LNG engineering related to the Taylor Road project of twenty..." But you don't have the mon... See, here you don't have the 2.3. See, next time you need to write them down here.
Yes, sir. I sure will. I'll let you for that.
I mean, we don't know where it's going.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's go ahead and approve this one.
I want to approve.
Second.
We need a motion and a second to approve, approval of work authorization number twenty-seven with LNG, period. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Avila.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I come before you requesting authorization to surplus City of Mission purchased vehicles for the purpose of selling said items via GovDeals online auction. These vehicles were acquired by the City of Mission from the Public Works Department over the years and have served their purpose. Staff is recommending the attached listing of vehicles the declared surplus, sir. It's total of nine vehicles, it's seven trucks, sir, a Vector, and a Backhoe.
You're authorized, you're declaring surplus?
Yes, sir, for online auction.
How many cars?
Total of nine vehicles, sir. Seven trucks, a Vector, and a Backhoe.
Okay. Okay. We need a motion to go ahead and approve equipment surplus.
I want to approve the surplus of nine vehicles.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Four fourteen, Dela is the money lady.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item four fourteen is the acceptance of the quarterly report of investments for the quarter ending March thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, and interest earned for six months ending March thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. Acceptance of these reports is required by the Public Funds Investment Act, Section twenty-two fifty-six point zero twenty-three of the Texas Government Code. For this quarter, the total increases to investment balances was two thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-six cents, and there were no decreases, leaving a total of twenty-one million five hundred and ten thousand six hundred and twelve dollars and eleven cents in outstanding investments for the quarter. The total interest earned on all funds year to date is one hundred and one thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty cents. This item is now before you.
Need a motion to go ahead and approve the...
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion. Who's gonna second it?
Second.
Jessica? Mr. Teo, second it.
Second, Mayor.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Against, motion carries. Okay, go ahead.
Item four fifteen is for the acceptance of the monthly tax report for the month of April two thousand seventeen. The 2016 total adjusted tax levy was 20 million 50,000 339 dollars and 66 cents, and the amount of collections as of April thirtieth, 2017, is 18 million 801,000 128 dollars and 70 cents, which represents 93.77% of the total tax levy. This item is now before you.
Need a motion to go ahead and approve the tax collection report?
I want to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Item four sixteen is for the approval of the April two thousand seventeen financial statements. The adjusted total beginning fund balance for all funds was 51 million 715,508 dollars. Total revenues for the period were 13 million 633,277 dollars, and total expenditures were 14 million 863,162 dollars, leaving an ending fund balance of 50 million 485,624 dollars. Total assets for the period were 152 million 616,120 dollars. Total liabilities are 58 million 632,318 dollars, resulting in total net assets of 93 million 983,801 dollars. This item is now before you.
Need a motion to approve the financial report?
I want to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
We would also like to see your numbers here, please. Your ears are pretty old. Item fourteen, I mean seventeen.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Come before you with agenda item four seventeen, authorize staff to engage Chaney Engineering LLC for professional engineering services for the community center roof project design. Staff is seeking authorization to engage Chaney Engineering to prepare plans and specifications to solicit bids for the community center building roof repairs. Chaney Engineering LLC will conduct design, development, and construction management services, attaches an official proposal from Chaney Engineering with a 6% fee of the total construction cost, which will be acquired once we receive bids. Yes.
Yes, sir.
My guest will, need a motion to approve his request.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. See how it is when we don't ask any question, boom, boom, boom. That's why, that's the way we wanna do every item, but I don't think we're gonna let it do it that way anymore. See how easy it was? Okay. Do you have any questions, Chief?
No, sir, no comments.
I don't have any questions. I already asked the questions. Do we have an executive session?
Mayor, I move that we put, we will, a motion to executive session pursuant to VTC A, Government Code Section 551.001, Mayor.
Okay, we have...
Second.
Have motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Then we go into executive session. Need a motion to reconvene?
Don't move, Mayor.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We are, recommendation...
Mr. Mayor and Council, on item seven point one A, this is an item to discuss pending litigation, including possible settlement relating to COVS Mission Highway Eighty-Three LLC versus City of Mission in cause number C, 800114-B, in the Ninety-third District Court, Hidalgo County, Texas. If the council wishes to take action, we would need to approve, a motion to approve the settlement agreement relating to COVS Mission Highway Eighty-Three versus City of Mission in cause number C, 8001-14-B, in the Ninety-third District Court, Hidalgo County, Texas, and further authorize Mayor, City Manager, and their City Attorney or outside-designated counsel to execute all legal documents necessary to resolve this matter and to proceed with finalizing the acquisition of the affected property.
We do need a motion.
I want to approve.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
On item seven point one B, Mayor, this is an item to discuss the pending litigation relating to the Mission Professional Firefighters Association, Frank Cavazos and Desi Olivares versus the City of Mission and Martin Garza Jr. in his official capacity as Mission City Manager in cause number C dash 2020 dash seventeen dash J in the 430th District Court, Hidalgo County, Texas. If the council wishes to take action, we would need a motion to authorize a City Attorney, or if necessary, retain outside-designated counsel to represent the city with regards to all issues, including all actions necessary to properly represent the city in the litigation, including any interlocutory appeals, if any, relating to the Mission Professional Firefighters Association, Frank Cavazos and Desi Olivares versus City of Mission and Martin Garza Jr. in his official capacity as Mission City Manager in cause number C dash 2020 dash seventeen dash J in the 430th District Court, Hidalgo County, Texas.
We need a motion to go ahead, and this is to get an outside...
It's, it's to authorize a City Attorney to proceed, however, if necessary, to hire outside counsel, correct, Mayor?
Need a motion for... Need a motion for both of those items. We have a motion?
Second, Mayor.
I need to say second. Who's second?
Second, Mayor.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Need a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Motion carries, so we adjourn.